Okay, I'd like to call the regular school, excuse me, the regular school committee meeting to order today being March 28th, 2017. We just concluded, we had two presentations of school improvement plans from the West School and from the Center School, so we're getting started a little late, but they were great presentations made by our two principals, Dr. Canaccio from the West School and Mrs. Orfanos from the Center School. The matters listed on our agenda tonight are reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. The meeting is being recorded live on PAT and it is also being recorded by the PBD School Committee's Recording Secretary, Leanna Harris. I'd like to start the meeting if everybody could please stand for a moment of silence and then I'm going to turn it over to our high school students who are here today from Student Advisory Council, Sophia and Emily, but if everybody could please rise for a moment of silence. Girls, why don't you guys come on up here? And please lead us in the pledge of allegiance. High School Principal Howard Buckley is here as well, as always. Thank you, Mr. Buckley, for being here. And I'll turn it over to you two. I think we have a little update on some of the happenings or at PBD High School. I'll turn it over to the both of you.
Okay. So, in the past month, performing arts has been very busy. Stage One has moved on to Drama Fest finals with their performance of Guards of the Taj and they're going to finals this weekend in Boston for three days. And they're currently working on their spring musical called Little Shop of Horrors. Band is heading to Lexington this weekend for MICA, which is a music festival where they'll perform, have a clinic and they'll perform, have a little clinic and receive awards at the end of the performance. Jazz night is Wednesday at the Holy Ghost in PBD and there'll be food served and you just enjoy your time listening to jazz music performed by the high school and the eighth grade band. Sophomores just had English MCAS last week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and tomorrow sophomores will have the PSATs from periods one through five. Third quarter is ending on April 7th, so teachers are giving their final tests, quizzes, final exams, and report cards should be expected about a week later. And currently, we're scheduling classes for next year. Most students have already scheduled. There are a few grades who haven't scheduled yet, but we're currently in the process of doing that.
So, National Arts Society, the new inductees have received their acceptance letter to the organization and they have their first meeting this Thursday. There's fifty, more than fifty members and they'll also be holding their elections for the secretary, president, et cetera, on Thursday. Also, National Arts Society, the present members launched a Tanner's Doing Good campaign which highlights students and teachers who really are making a difference in the school and just thinking of beyond themselves and just trying to make a better world. So, that's displayed on the TV monitor so everyone in the school can see that. And then the new induct, new inductees will be inducted on April 12th, DECA. They competed at states and had a very successful weekend. Sixteen students will be attending the international competition in Anaheim. And sports, spring sports practices started this week. Both boys and girls lacrosse had their jamboree tournaments over the weekend and the boys' baseball team went to the Cape Cod to have their tournament. And the parent athlete meeting is coming up on Monday, April 3rd. And a senior update, April 11th is Senior Health Day, so there'll be periods one through four, there'll be different presenters speaking to all the seniors. April 24th is Academic Award Night for seniors and some juniors. The class auction is coming up on April 8th, so Saturday from this Saturday. And the ticket sales will be at lunch, so any students can purchase them for parents or themselves. So, we're just trying to raise funds for our class. We were able to give out free cap and gown this year, which is something that's, hasn't been done in years, so that's really cool. And then April 13th is Student Government Day, so a lot of you will be having a counterpart that day. Prom is May 25th, so many students are excited for that. And then past events, we had a successful dodgeball tournament. It was fun to see, the teachers had teams, so that was fun to see and a lot of students came out and it was a really nice night. Junior prom was just this last week and very fun and a lot of students and a lot of teachers reported that it was a really, really good time and a celebration. And then best buddies attended prom in Bedford and it was super fun to, Scannos donated facility rooms that they could take pictures with and they had snacks and then we had a bus donated by the superintendent to take us to the prom and it was really just a great time. And then coming up is the mock trial competition which will be hosted here, April 4th and 5th, and they've been preparing since January and it'll be a really interesting trial. So, that is it.
Through the chair, Mr. Mayor. Just, just so you know, I know we've in the past had more students here. Rachel Ellis, who is usually the kind of lead with the microphone, is actually working tonight, so we gave her a pass and along with Audrey Gabriel, I believe had performing arts practice tonight, and Ian Manning had a family emergency, so she couldn't be here. So, one thing that Ian was going to talk about was our prom and we had our junior prom on Friday at the Danvers Port Yacht Club and it went, it went extremely well. And just to share a little story, last night I was at the girls' hockey banquet and we have a co-op with Linfield and North Reading also. And that's really been a great, a great thing for our girls because it's also allows them to, you know, interact with, with other communities. Some of those girls actually came to, to the prom, which was really nice. And talking to one of the parents, they said, you know, you know, aside from the usual, you know, things you get nervous about or worry about, they said, "You sound very calm." And I said, "Well, we trust our kids and we've set kind of a tone there." And, you know, it's something to see where you have that many kids in a facility like the Danvers Port acting like adults, young adults, maybe even better than some adults and, you know, on the way out shaking hands, saying thank you. It's, it's, you know, after a long week and then spending a night with 300 kids, it's really not that, that big of a deal. It's, it's actually very enjoyable for a lot of us there. We had a great turnout from the faculty giving their time and I just wanted to share that with you because I think, you know, these other parents were kind of surprised that it just, it just kind of happens. And they said, "Well, how do you do that?" And I said, "Well, it's just the tone that's been set. We trust our kids, they, they know what the rules are and they follow them and they have a good time with it." So, it's been really good feedback from that. Also, I don't know, Sophia, do you want to hand those down? Just a kind of an update, if you see any conflicts in that, just let me know by tomorrow, I'm sure you will, but this is kind of a quick schedule of the end of the year. Not with every single thing, but at least the events for the seniors before graduation. It has the, the final exam schedule on there and some of the different events, which again, we look forward to having with our seniors. It's a very hectic a month, really kind of kicks off with Student Government Day, but again, it's very enjoyable because they make it enjoyable and it's, it's really a good time. So, those will be actually emailed out to the senior class, hopefully sometime tomorrow, and then we'll probably send it out on a constant contact, a copy of that, to the parents.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley, and thank you, Sophia and Emily. I know there's a lot going on right now, as I said, in this exciting time at the high school and thank you for that report. As I've mentioned many times, we all look forward to hearing what's taking place and it's, it's wonderful news and thank you. Okay, and if there's no objection, I wanted to take a couple of items out of order. We have Mr. Jody Norton here today, as well as some students from the PBD High School Vocational Technical Program. And if there's no objection, I'd like to go directly to, to them now.
No objection.
Great. Dr. Levine, I'll turn it over to you. Did you want to make the introduction?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Jody Norton's been with us for almost a year. He has a great deal of energy. He's been taking a very good look and a hard look at our programs and how to improve them. He's had a positive impact at the high school as part of the high school team and it's my pleasure to introduce Jody. And students, do you want to join him? Why don't you join him at the microphone? And if he gets boring, just jump right in.
Thank you. Thank you and good evening. We actually really appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak tonight with you. During this time, I want to briefly review what's been taking place this year in the career and technical education programs. That's what, that's what we're really calling it these days. The vocational word, you know, wasn't really used across the country. It was referred to as career and technical education and the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has recently just dropped it as well where it was once CVTE and some of the documentation still says that, but now they're going with CTE. So, we're referring to it in the same manner. So, with the help of some of the students tonight from our medical assisting program, they're going to share some of the things that are going on at the Leahy Medical Center. All of these students behind me are involved in the internship program and are doing great things there. I have some folders to pass out at the end. In this folder is the medical assisting letter that we received from the state because that program is new. It was approved, I believe, on October 5th last fall. And along with that are the frameworks for that program, so the state CVTE frameworks, as well as some new promotional materials that we have for all five of the programs. So, basically, at the beginning of this school year, there were two major tasks that we had to accomplish, the first one being getting the medical assisting program actually approved. It's been ongoing for, you know, almost two years now and now it's officially what's called Chapter 74. And also, we had some safety directives that were required by the DESE that we had to take care of to ensure that the well-being of the students and that we were following all safety and OSHA standards and that has also been taken care of. And that was taken care of with the help of a lot of different people, too many to name and thank, but that was a big effort to get that done and that completed about in January. Other areas that we're continuing to address that the state has asked us to look a little bit closer at are things such as the sequence of our courses within our programs. So, within the five vocational programs or CTE programs, they, they have to be sequential, okay? So, full year sophomore course or more, full year junior course or more, full year senior course or more. So, those are some things that we've had to change in the scheduling. Some career planning initiatives, we've been taking a long look at that and we've added career planning to the sophomore, junior, and senior year. And also advisory board or advisory committee makeup. We're trying to look at the advisory boards and recruit new members, new community members that could help steer the direction of our programs. We've also been working to really reboot and rebrand, really rebrand our programs with themes such as staying connected. We're trying to stay connected to the community, stay, stay connected to our academics while they're in their CTE areas. Those are advantages that we can offer that other places may not be able to do. And also rebrand in the fact that we're preparing students to be both college and career ready. Another big thing we're trying to do is find new ways to market the programs to students and parents at both the middle school and the high school level. Upcoming in May, I'm actually recruiting right now, we have our second advisory committee meeting of the year. We run two of those a year and I am looking for a keynote speaker, if anybody is interested to speak for 10 minutes in front of our advisory committee members. I'm taking applications. And then we also have a general advisory committee meeting coming up in May. Throughout the year, students have participated in many community events thus far. Culinary students have served the community here at the Italian Awards Day, at the high school at the Veterans Breakfast just last Tuesday. They took part in the Taste of the North Shore, which was at the, the old Ferncroft, I think it's a Doubletree now in Danvers, yes. And cosmetology students continue to serve senior citizens on Tuesday. The senior citizens come in, have lunch in the melting pot in our culinary arts department and then go get their hair and nails done in cosmetology. The medical students behind me and many others have taken part in many blood pressure clinics throughout the city this year and some of them may touch a little bit more, more about, you know, more with that. So, we're very excited and looking forward to, you know, doing bigger and better things, not only this year, but in the years to come. I encourage everyone who's interested in learning more about our programs and what we're doing to please visit the PBD Public Schools website and check out the Career Technical Education page. A lot of effort's been put into that to get word out and things that you'll see there, we have CTE Students of the Month that we highlight. You can link to our Twitter page. I noticed some people have followed us on Twitter and I appreciate that. Continue to do so if you, if, if you have a Twitter handle. The link to the CVTE frameworks for all our programs can be found there. The eighth grade presentation that we do to the eighth grade students in December is there as well. So, without any further ado, I'd like to introduce some students or they'll actually introduce themselves. These are some medical assisting students. We have both sophomores and juniors with us tonight and they're going to talk a little bit about what they've been doing this year at Leahy.
So, I had about a five-minute speech made up in my head, but Mr. Norton said will that down to about a minute, so I'm going to wing this a little bit. Like to introduce myself, I'm Troy Kappas, I'm a junior at PBD High School. I'm a three-sport athlete, I play soccer, track, and lacrosse. I'm part of student council and I'm also part of the Leap for Education College Success Program, but most importantly, I'm part of the medical assisting program. And the biggest thing that I get out of this program is the volunteer aspect. I volunteer at Leahy Physical Therapy in Danvers on Tuesday nights. Not there right now, but let's not talk about that. And what really impacts me is I made a connection there with not only the manager, Deb Tremonti, some physical therapists, her name's Sam and Lori, but also made a connection with one particular patient. He would always come in Tuesday nights when I was there and we would talk all the time just throughout his entire session, whether it was about baseball, Patriots, his family, whatever was going on, we'd just talk about it. And that really got me involved in volunteering and I wanted to go back every time to just see him. And as I kept volunteering, as I kept going every week, I would play more of a role and throughout the weeks, I'd do more. There was, I think, two or three times where I'd run the show completely. Brought him in, say, "How you doing?", set up his exercise and everything, make sure he's doing it right and it's the PT watch me, sure I was doing all right, but I was able to do hands-on stuff with an actual patient. I thought that was huge because it really opened up my eyes because now I know this is what I really want. I either want to be an athletic trainer or a physical therapist to sit and, and through this program, thanks to Mr. Norton, my teacher, Ms. Benosa, and the medical assistant program, I'm truly thankful that I had this opportunity and thank you.
My name is Alicia Carestars, I'm a sophomore at PBD High and I'm in the medical assisting program. I moved to PBD from Grease Elementary School and I intern at Leahy Clinic in PBD on Thursdays after school till five at the PACU department, which is before and after surgery. I plan on volunteering a second day actually because I just like it so much. Throughout the year, I've been performing in blood pressure clinics throughout the city, like Mr. Norton said. And when I graduate high school, I plan to major in nursing and hopefully become a nurse practitioner. The medical assisting program is allowing me the opportunity to learn the knowledge skills necessary to get me through the college and the challenging major of nursing. It, it is also exposing me to the medical professionals at Leahy, at Leahy Medical Center that I get to work besides, which are just all great. This is putting me in an exact environment that I have to work in the future and there's countless benefits to that, to be exposed to such an amazing program and to be directed to the, to the place I want to go in the future.
Hi, I'm Calvin Anton. I'm a sophomore at PBD High, I'm part of the medical assistant program and I'm a volunteer at Leahy up in Danvers below the old psych ward in Danvers. And the medical assistant program just kind of pushed you forward, well, pushed me forward and I'm sure them too, in the direction of volunteer and give back to the community. That's it.
Hi, my, my name is Josari Mendoza. I am a sophomore at PBD High School, currently in the medical assisting program. I am an honor student who takes advantage, thank you, who takes advantage of most of the rigorous classes that the high school has to offer. I have also been volunteering at the blood pressure clinics throughout the year and I intern at the Leahy Clinic North Radiology Department on Tuesdays and Thursdays. This is an incredible experience. I am getting the opportunity to figure out if this is the area of professional studies I want to pursue. I work hand-in-hand with the, with the professionals in the medical field, which is helping me learn both hands-on and technical skills needed to succeed in the field of medical radiology. I'm really looking forward to the next couple of years in the medical assisting program.
So, so to close, I would just like to add that we, we have about ten students participate in this internship program. It is after school and looking forward, you know, I've talked about changing our schedule. What we're really trying to do is during that senior year, we're getting, we're rescheduling the courses so that we could possibly have a three-block period in which two days a week, we could actually transport the students over to Leahy during the school day. And in that way, many more students will be able to participate because what's happening right now is there's a lot of students that are athletes, there's a lot of students that have, that have jobs after school, there's a lot of students that have to go home and maybe babysit a sibling. So, what we're really trying to do is a couple of days a week, get them, and we're well on our way to achieving that, get them to the hospital during school hours. So, that's, that's one of the goals for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Norton, that was wonderful and students, outstanding job, that was terrific. Thank you for sharing your stories with us.
And on my way out, I'm just going to hand you a folder with some of those materials.
Great. Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair. First, students, excellent job. I know it's not easy to stand there in front of a microphone and, and speak, but you guys did great. Awesome job, all four of you. So, that's one program at the high school and you said that there are five currently. How do you see those programs that we currently have and how do you envision growth in those programs or alternative programs that you may think about adding?
Yeah, so, the first way in which we're trying to address that and grow them is to connect with the community and try to find more ways in which our current students can get involved. An example of that is the, the coffee shop slash melting pot area in which we'd like to make it more available to the public. It has to do with students and getting, getting enough students in there to be able to service more people or more customers. We have a, we have an incredible amount of culinary arts space slash baking space in which we really could produce quite a bit of food. It would be nice to possibly, you know, have fresh breads there and sell, and sell them daily, have desserts there, you know, possibly make cakes, cupcakes, and things like that for special occasions. But in order for us to do that, we, we've got to get more students into the program, which is also part of our recruiting efforts. Some of the, some of the programs that we've had for many, many, many years, those enrollments have gone down over the last three years and now we're making a, you know, a really hard push to bring them back up again. Early education and care, the early childhood education program, again, we're trying to increase time in that program during the senior year in which those students could possibly help out. Some of the other preschools around the city, even some of the elementary schools, the program at the McCarthy, that's where it is, right, the McCarthy School, in which it's a great opportunity for those students to get hands-on experience. They need to get, you know, a certain amount of hours to actually pass a certification exam, but also they're a great helping hand for other adults that are, you know, that could certainly need or use help with, you know, reading to children or whatever the case may be. The electronics program, we have a wonderful new teacher who's doing a great job this year, who's really, there's a lot of students that have actually transferred back into that program, so we're excited on how he has the potential to grow that program over the next few years. And we're also trying to connect that to more of the engineering side of electronics and we have him trying to meet with Mr. Eaton down at the, at the Higgins who has that technology center so they can possibly align curriculum or somehow find a way in which the programs could scaffold one into another. Who am I leaving out? Medical, cosmetology, okay. Cosmetology, we have another new teacher that's actually doing a wonderful job and congratulations if you're watching at home because she just had a baby the other day, so she is out on maternity leave, Cecily Bogah. But, you know, the way our exploratory program works is they explore through each one of those programs for the first semester of freshman year and then they re-explore, hopefully their top choice during the second half of the year. And cosmetology was maxed out. So, that was one of the few programs in which maybe one or two of the students did not actually get their first choice to re-explore because they, they were full. And that's, that's, you know, she's truly done a great job in making that interesting and exciting for students. Because again, that's one of those existing programs, you know, with the opening of the new school down the street that may have affected our numbers.
So, on the second part of that question was growth. So, not taking into account those five programs that we have, do you see expanding into more programs?
Absolutely. So, I think the quickest way and the best way to go about that would be to look at existing programs that we have. So, you know, we have a TV broadcasting studio. We have, we teach programming in the math department, we teach web development in the business department. I was a former information technology services teacher. That's the cluster name for the state. Underneath information technology services, you have two programs. You have ISSN, which is Information Support Services and Networking and Programming and Web Development. Programming and web development is an area that we probably could get off the ground rather quickly because we're already doing it. What has to happen is we have to align them and sequence them into an actual program. It can't be somebody takes the class for one semester, leaves for a year, comes back and takes part two the next year. It has to become a much more rigorous and long-term commitment for the students to become a part of something like that. And then we would also need a Chapter 74 certified instructor. So, programming and web development is one area. Criminal justice is another area. Television broadcasting is another area. Those are things that we already do, yet we're not capitalizing in the fact that they, if they're Chapter 74 programs, they get funded differently. So, it's definitely something that we're interested in doing.
Through the chair, just one follow-up on that point. Would that take away from students that just want to take it as an elective?
It's, it's, yes, it's possible. That's, that's one of the issues that we currently deal with now in terms of culinary arts and early childhood education because they are also offered as elective courses. So, you know, the direction I think we're going is to offer those types of courses as electives later on in the high school career, like junior or senior year, because at that point, they're not committed to a program. And at that point, they may have a little bit more room in their schedule because some of those required core courses are out of the way and the schedule opens up later on.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Rosignol. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Norton. It's good to see you here. I've been dying to ask you a question. The, the techno, the technology programs at the high school, I went online to check before I asked my questions and I know you do, we do offer a lot, but I know recently we had a presentation by teachers and the IT department and at Higgins, they're offering the certification programs. And I just wondered, is that something that could be continued at the high school? When I looked at the course offerings, I didn't know if any of those already offered that same type of certification, but I wondered, is that something that we could offer so that students would be qualified to walk out of high school and get a job in that area? area?
So I'm not sure what certifications you're talking about at the Higgins.
They're actually getting certifications and working on the help desk. There are 30 students and they actually go out into the building and they help the teachers.
Yeah, I'm familiar. Thank you. So that's right in my wheelhouse because that's what I used to teach. For the last 13 years, that's what I've done, is I've run the help desk through the information technology services program. So currently, we have some of those students that have transitioned from the Higgins up to the high school that I work in with Mr. McHugh in what's called our START program. However, it is not, it is not a class in which they're pursuing certification. I would envision something like that falling under this program and web development program in which they had, because many of those certification exams are extremely rigorous. And, you know, as a teacher, we would spend the whole year, you know, doing PC repair and maintenance to sit for a COMTIA A-plus certification. You know, in the junior year, we would teach the Cisco Networking Program, and our goal would be to get Network Plus, which is also a COMTIA certification, and then to become a Cisco Certified Networking Administrator during that senior year. So, no, it doesn't really exist at this point, but it would be a nice avenue to, as far as growing the programs.
I agree. I think it's in demand, especially in this area.
It certainly is. It's the second, besides the healthcare industry, you know, that's the second most in demand of all these industries that we'd like to get into.
It's true. It was really nice to hear from you students because you're heading into a field where you're all going to be able to get a job, and that's very important. Your parents will be thrilled, and you'll be ready for whatever you decide to do. You know, you can get a job right away, you can go to college, you can work your way through school, and it's nice to know that you'll have that behind you. I really am very happy to know that you're trying to grow the programs up there. I think it's such a necessary piece of education, and it is amazing how many people in this community have no idea about our vocational technical offerings. It's really frustrating. So anything you need for marketing the program, we need to make sure you can do it because just getting the word out is really important right now. You, I don't know if it happens to everybody else, but it just shocks me how many people have no idea what PBD High offers. It just drives me crazy. Anyway, I'm glad you're on it. I think it'll go up on everybody's radar once you're done with us.
Yes, thank you. That feels good to hear that, by the way, because I do run into those same problems. Oh, I didn't know you still had those programs, so it happens a lot.
It really does, and it shouldn't, especially for people who have children in the district, and they start to look other, you know, in other locations, and they have no idea what's right in front of them. So good luck. Whatever you need, come back and ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. Thank you. Excellent.
Great job. Nice job, too. Thank you so much for being here. Motion received.
Second.
All in favor. So vote. Okay, and if there's no objection, I did want to turn it over to Superintendent Levine. We have a special guest today that I know Dr. Levine would like the opportunity to introduce. Doctor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce the new principal of the West School. His name is Nick Kohler. Nick joins us from the town of Merrimack in New Hampshire, where he has been a very successful assistant principal. He comes extremely highly recommended and came through a very competitive pool of candidates and made it to the finalist group. My small group, my small committee chose him as the outstanding candidate to take over the West School from Tom Canaccio, and as we've heard tonight, a longtime principal here who has been very successful in his own right. I think that Nick will be a wonderful fit for the West School community, the teachers, the parents, and most especially the children. And Nick, I want you to know that the school committee really isn't this nice. They just, they're on their best behavior.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Levine.
Welcome, Nick Kohler, please.
Mayor Breton Court, members of the school committee, Dr. Levine, Ms. Murtaugh. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and have an opportunity to just introduce myself. Let me just start by saying how thrilled I am to be joining the PBD community as the principal at West Memorial Elementary School, starting in the 2017-18 school year. And sitting through the presentations tonight, I realized both physically and in many other ways how big issues I have to fill over there. I'm greatly appreciative of the support of Dr. Levine and the leadership team, and I'm very cognizant of the trust that the school board, the leadership team, and the West community has put in me as I take on that role as principal. I'm an educator because I love children. Children come first. I'm committed to helping each child embrace curiosity, seek out their life passions, and it was great to see some high school students here tonight talking about their passions and where they're headed in life, feel success and belonging, and grow into happy and contributing members of our community. I'm very honored to have been chosen to lead this family at West. When I went through the interview process, I asked the selection committee how they might describe the climate and culture at West, and they said unequivocally, "This is a family school." So I'm excited to be part of that family and help lead it. I'm very mindful, and especially after the presentation by Dr. Canaccio tonight, of the very high standard at West Memorial and the commitment to hard work that both he and his staff has made to bring West to a Tier One school three years in a row. I look forward to fostering the practices that have supported this growth and success, but also, while also looking at refinements and improvements as time goes forward for growth and in the best interest of students. So again, I'm honored to take on this role. I look forward to working with the students first, parents, and staff at West Memorial School, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to take on the principal role there. Thank you. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
So, Mr. Kohler, we have made available the Professional Development Day on May 1st at the West School so that Mr. Kohler can meet with the faculty and the adults in the building and have a nice informal session with them. And we are planning May 16th at the West Memorial School for the parents to come and meet Mr. Kohler as well. While I'm on the, well, I'll hold off on that. Nick, there is not a more wonderful group of people for you to work with, both at the school board level and your colleagues that you will meet as you go along here at the principal level. They're outstanding, and as you already know, the West School is an outstanding place to be. So we're lucky to have you, you're lucky to have it, and we look forward to a very successful career here in PBD.
Thank you. And before I leave too, I just wanted to thank Dr. Canaccio for hanging in there with me tonight, and it was nice to begin dialogue with him and begin the process of a nice smooth transition at West. So thank you and have a nice evening.
And now I'd like to go back to the agenda. Approval of minutes?
Motion to approve February 28, 2017, regular school committee minutes.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rosignol. You've heard his motion for approval of the minutes from February 28, 2017, regular school committee meeting, seconded by Mr. Amico. Any comments on the minutes? Mrs. Dunn?
Just one, and I'm just trying to locate it. Somewhere in the minutes, it's mentioned the Essex, I'm sorry, Essex Tech.
Second to last page?
I think so. It's listed as Essex Valley. I was just going to ask that we just put the correct name in there. I can't find it, I'm sorry. Where is it? Ah, here we go. Yes, it's actually page nine.
Bottom of page nine?
Page nine.
The Essex Valley?
Essex Valley. It should just be Essex, I think it's Essex County Tech, but I'm not sure, to be honest, but I know it's not Essex Valley.
We'll get Valley out of there.
Okay.
Good catch, Mrs. Dunn. Eagle eye. All right, we'll make that correction. Roll call on the minutes?
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. And now we have schedule of bills. Mrs. Carpenter, turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 3368, dated March 14, 2017, in the amount of $1,428,241.07, subject to audit.
Second.
Great, thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant A, number 336A, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
I'd also like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3386, dated March 28, 2017, in the amount of $103,002.37, subject to audit.
Second.
Heard the motion for approval of warrant B, number 3386, made by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Hockman. I apologize. Go to you.
I apologize. I have it on the agenda as 10 cents less than what you read, and I see that in your schedule of bills, Ms. Carpenter, that you're sitting next to me, you read it correctly. Mr. Stanton?
I'm sorry, where do you have it?
I have $103,002.27.
You're right, and I have that over here, and then I have it different on the other page.
Just for accuracy purposes, so Ms. Dunn doesn't have to address it at her minutes.
It should be 37 cents.
We'll throw in the extra dime.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant C, number 3387, dated March 28, 2017, in the amount of $119,556.51, subject to audit.
Second.
You've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant C, number 3387, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd also like to make a motion to approve warrant D, number 3388, dated March 28, 2017, in the amount of $797,141.88, subject to audit.
Second.
Heard the motion for approval of warrant D, number 3388, made by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Next, we will go to continued business. We have a number of items, and let's start first with, Mrs. Dunn, any update on the MSBA Higgins project?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Higgins School Building Committee met last Thursday, the 16th, for our monthly meeting. The items that were discussed were the drains on the Phase Two side of the project. They have, they had installed a box drain, which is a subsurface drain, and these are all designed to assist not only with the drainage of the new fields, but also in the parking area and the roadways. Let's see. The school flash, the flashing lights have been installed, and that's quite helpful with the school. That was a project that we were waiting for that to go through. The punch list is progressing, and the back punch list is moving along. The back punch list is when something, when an item is on a punch list and then it gets repaired or taken care of, there's a second list, and that requires the second look. So that's the back punch, and that's going along very well. The, let's see, the units, we have in-house units for hearing devices that will be assisting people in various areas of the building, and there was a discussion about that. I will have more details for you at the next meeting about that. Let's see, as far as the wiring, the wiring is hooked up to the building, they're waiting for equipment for the rack. And if you can think of the rack as a go-between, between the hookup from the street and the hookup from the school, and that's being installed. We're waiting for Comcast on that one. And we had questions about irrigation because one of the projects that make Higgins so interesting is that the water for irrigation on the fields is going to be drawn from all of the water that's available behind the school. And there was a very, very good discussion about how that's going to operate, how that helps with the desire to make our school lead silver and keep it a green school. So they're working on that, and there were no change orders this month. That's big. They've got big projects on, I'm sorry, big progress on the unsubmitted, the owners' project manager and the architects are making sure that the unsubmitted bills are coming in on a timely basis. And they have, they once again hit more granite. Every time they dig a hole, they hit more granite, but they're working with it. And one of the other features of this project that is so amazing is that the stones that are found on site are all processed there and mixed. So we're saving money with all the dirt. If people see those piles of dirt, that's money back to the schools. That's money back to the project because it's being utilized throughout that whole site. It's good for drainage, they know how to mix it, and they put it into all different types of gradations. So they're working on that again because as soon as that is finished, they're going to be able to lay the new drainage pipes. And they're on track, they're really on track to finish everything on time. So the good weather has helped, and if you go over at any time, you will see a difference every day. So our next meeting is going to be on the 27th, and again, that's Thursday, 4:00 p.m. at the Higgins in the library. I'm sorry, in the conference room.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Appreciate that report. Mr. Amico?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to the committee and also Ms. Dunn, I just want to thank you for all you do with the Higgins Project. Thank you very much. A couple of items have come up, have come across. One, actually, they're both in the gymnasium. The light switch of the gymnasium, if you lean on the light switch, it turns light off in the whole gymnasium. It could be a potential hazard. And also the windows in the gymnasium, early morning games with the sun coming in on the east, it's very, very light in there, and it's tough for the kids to look up to, again, could be a potential issue if maybe we can look into possibly tinting or shades on those windows, if that's something that we could do. And one really positive thing, the Higgins was open for business. We had our first show there, the Center School at the movies, and it was a tremendous show. And I want to thank Dr. Levine and the AV person who was there because it was, it didn't feel like you were at a middle school. Felt like you were at a really, you know, a real venue, so thank you to all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. Mrs. Dunn?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Amico, I should have mentioned it in the report. I did bring up the issue of the light switches in the gym, and they're going to be looking into a cage that goes over the light switches so that if anybody did lean against it, it wouldn't go off. And they're also present- go off. And they're also presently in discussions with the window manufacturer. They're looking into a tint for the glass. They'd like to avoid shades. They're hopeful that the tint would, would work, because it isn't just the gym that they're looking at. They're looking at the gym, they're looking at the glass above the cafeteria and the entrance, and one of the things they're looking at in the performing arts end of the building, they have a problem with the sun coming in as well, and on that end of the building, there are, you can see them, they're, they're like an awning. It's not just an architectural feature of the building. They're supposed to work to keep the sun down, and they're going to look into whether that needs to be adjusted or not. And one of the other things is that it, they, they have timed it. They know the time of the year when this is going to happen. They know, you know, how far it reaches into the building. The main office was even affected by the sunlight. We're talking about issuing sunglasses. So it, it's, in one respect, it's a happy problem, because when you've got the sun coming in the windows, it's great. Natural light helps everybody, and, you know, it really brightens things up. On the other hand, when nobody can see who's sitting next to them, because they're blinded by the sun, we, we do have to come up with something. So they're, they're actually looking into it, and they've had several meetings about what to do about the sunlight, and how, how to be able to reap the benefits, but also be able to help everybody that's in the building. And again, with the light switches, they were checking several other areas in the building, too, to see if that problem might exist, and then they're going to order the cage.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. Dunn. I, again, thank you for all of your hard work in making this project, project such a success. Mr. Amico reminded me of the gymnasium and the solar glare that occurs in the early mornings. I was contacted by some basketball players. In addition to the solar glare, apparently, the lines that were used to, on the wood flooring in the gymnasium for the courts that the PBA uses, so it's the cross courts, the hardwood is a blond or a light color wood, and the color tape or paint that they used on the floor is pale yellow, and with the solar glare on top of that, it makes it difficult to see. Just wondering if we could just address that while we had people in the building or on the project.
Thank you. That's, actually, I'll bring it up. I'll make sure that can look into it. I didn't know about that one. I thought everything was painted puberty blue.
Thank you. Okay, next item, Dr. Levine, any update on the for-kids-only before or after-school program?
Not really. Everything is going well, similar to the last report, but I do think as we get close to the end of the spring, maybe sometime in May, it will be a good time to bring in FKO to make a end-of-the-year report and talk to you about all that's been going on this year and what our plans for next year are. And upon my recommendation, you need to vote, I believe, the contract says, continuation for a second year, so we, we will do that as well sometime in the spring.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. Our next item is, is the superintendent search, and I did want to provide an update. I received a call last evening, late, early evening, from one of the three finalists that we named at the last school committee meeting. Dr. Arthur Yunovsky, who's currently the Assistant Superintendent at Gloucester, notified me that he had just been awarded the superintendent position at Wayland, and he has accepted that position, and he was going to be withdrawing from consideration. Very classy phone conversation, and very happy for him, and certainly want to wish him well. But that then pushes us or forces us to make a decision as to the next steps we want to take. We have two finalists that we have already scheduled for site visits. It's both of their school districts, Lynn and in Somerville, as well as they're going to be coming here to meet with some of our department heads, school officials, and other community leaders, and then we'll be following up with interviews. That'll be scheduled shortly. So we have some decisions to make as to just moving forward with the two candidates that we have, or if we wanted to invite another candidate into the finalist position. So we just wanted to mention that to the school committee members and see if anybody had any thoughts at this time on, on the next step. Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to wish Mr. Yunovsky well in his endeavor, but secondly, you know, we've already gone down this process. I think changing course now would be futile. We have two good candidates that we decided to move forward. I think we just stay the course, see how the site visits go for both of those candidates, and see how the visit to our facilities goes, and we just continue on the path that we've already established.
Did you want to make that in the form of a motion?
I'd be happy to. So moved.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Rosignol, seconded by Mr. Hockman, to move forward with our two finalists. A roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Great, thank you. Next item under continued business is the 2017-2018 school year calendar. Dr. Levine, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. I put in your packet a draft that did not have the professional development days that you asked for. I do have those for you, so I would like a, a motion to approve this calendar with the amendment. If you would circle the following professional development days, October 26th, December 6th, January 31st, and June 1st. June 1.
On the calendar, Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you. Through the chair to Dr. Levine. Are those professional development half-days? Okay, well, one of them actually is on the calendar, and that's the December 6th one. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, so the, the final date doesn't change as far as the students, I'm sorry?
It's, let me go through those again. October 26th, December 6th, January 31st, and June 1. The early release days, that does not change the number of days in the calendar.
Thank you. That's my question, if it doesn't, as long as it doesn't change.
Great. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Levine, for putting this calendar together, and Ms. Macarelli, I'm sure, for assisting you, and thank you for, we had some conversations outside of this meeting regarding the calendar, and the, the only question I have with regard to professional development days that you've just identified is June 1. I think we, in our conversations, agreed that professional development is designed to assist staff members and teachers to better serve students and, and learn in terms of their profession. So I, I just don't see the benefit of having professional development in the last two weeks or three weeks of the school year. I'd like to see that date moved into the winter or maybe even the fall. On top of that, with regard to some other items in the calendar, I don't see any, and I know in the original iteration of the calendar that you and I worked off of before, there were days for parent-teacher conferences that aren't in this version that's before us tonight, which will need to get dropped in there somewhere, too. So there'll be some more half-days. I'd like to see those, although I know what the bargaining agreement says, I'd like to see those parent-teacher conferences to be in the evenings and not have afternoon parent-teacher conferences. I know for the parent-teacher conferences set up for this Thursday at the elementary level, just in speaking to my two daughters' elementary school teachers, their evenings are booked completely, and I can get my pick or choice of an afternoon conference time, or spend an hour having lunch with a teacher or talking to them about my daughter, because there's very little participation in the afternoon. Like to see if we can work on evenings only for parent-teacher conferences, even if it's in consecutive weeks or spread out. I realize teachers have obligations, too, in their own personal lives, but if that's something that we could look at to better assist our teachers in terms of being able to communicate with parents regarding what's going on in classrooms. To the point of getting, or when the last day of school is not extending that, I would like to see school on both Columbus Day and on Election Day. We've talked about that before, particularly last year I brought up Columbus Day. It's no longer a holiday that's recognized as a day off throughout the country. In fact, I think most of the country has school on Columbus Day, and I'd like to see us have the continuity that we talked about in the beginning of the school year. Election Day, I think this committee's talked about at length over the last half dozen years or so. In addition to that, we continue to, and I realize that the statute talks about 180-day school year, but that's a minimum. That's the minimum required by the state of Massachusetts in terms of public school days for, for teaching and learning. I don't see any reason why we don't expand on that, whether it be by a day or two or three. We don't expect the minimum of our students. We don't expect the minimum of our staff. We don't get the minimum from our students or staff. We get more than that, because we set the bar a little bit higher. We've, we're going to be taking on a new science curriculum. We hear principals and teachers tell us routinely through school improvement presentations and other opportunities that we have to speak to them, that there's just not enough time to get through the curriculum. So I'd like to see those additions made to the calendar as well.
Dr. Levine?
Thank you. The, we, we actually have the dates of the parent-teacher conferences, but they're not here, and I will send them. Again, they will not affect the, the days of the calendar, which I think this committee needs to approve as soon as possible, so that the community knows what the beginning of the school year is and the end of the school year. I'll only speak to one issue, and you and I spoke about Columbus Day. I believe that Columbus Day is an issue of collective bargaining. It's a holiday that has been given to each unit in the school system every year, so you have a very strong past practice. I don't believe that we can simply add Columbus Day as a school day to the teacher's contract without bargaining it at the table.
I'll go right back to you, Mr. Hockman, but I know a couple of other people want to speak.
Yeah, just on that point, if I may, Mr. Mayor, and, and I don't disagree necessarily with your assessment of that, Dr. Levine, but I would ask that maybe you and Ms. Carpenter, as the chairperson of the Finance Committee, impact bargain that, if that's what you believe is necessary to have it done.
Mr. Amico?
Thank you. Through the chair to Dr. Levine. Mr. Hockman did bring up a great point on one of the issues, on all of his issues, but one issue that I agree on is the half-day on June 1 for professional development. I, I feel as though Professional Development Day, where maybe instruction is, is taught or focused on that day, might be better served before testing, when, you know, three or four weeks before, say, MCAS, where teachers could probably use that professional development and guide their students for the last two or three weeks before testing, so.
Through the chair. That'll be no problem moving that. That's no issue at all.
Mrs. Carpenter, then Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you. A couple of points to Mr. Hockman's Columbus Day and lengthening the school year, as it was already acknowledged, you would have to be under collective bargaining, and I, I don't foresee that happening for this school calendar. So if, you know, Dr. Levine has stated that he needs to get this calendar done, I would assume that we could bargain it for the, the following contracts, but I don't see it happening for this one. And in regards to PD in June, I'd like to speak to the Assistant Superintendent, because I do recall that many of the bargaining sessions that we had involved her having a side committee in working with our union in regards to the days that would work best for them for professional development and some of the trainings and the timelines that they need to have. So I would just like to ask her, her, her opinion on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. One of the reasons why we, why I did a June 1, or we did a June 1 is because we're going to be implementing a science curriculum. So they will have professional, our teachers will have professional development throughout next year, and that is a good time to take a pulse of the district and the teachers, to see what they need for the upcoming year. So that, that was the reasoning behind that. So thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hockman brought up some good points, but I think that, again, like Mrs. Carpenter said, right now, this calendar will meet the requirements of our current contract, and the other issues would have to be negotiated. One thing that I do want to ask is, I don't think it's in the contract, but I think it's been a longstanding decision that's always been followed, was that professional development did not take place on a Friday, Friday or a Monday. I don't know if that's still in, in place, but that June 1 would be a Friday, and I think you've, you've always avoided that. And in addition, I would like to ask if, at a future meeting, we could be provided with the cost, a one-day cost of running the school district, so that we would be able to have those at our fingertips. I don't know if you'd have it now, Mr. Stanton. I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot with that question, but if we're going to lengthen the year or anything like that, we need to know what the cost would be. If you know what one day costs, multiply it out, then you can have a good discussion.
If you gave me five minutes, I should be able to get you that number.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Amico, I'll go back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to Dr. Levine and Ms. Murtagh. I'd like to withdraw my request for that June 1 after hearing. You do have something planned for that day. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, any further comments, Mr. Rosignol?
Make a motion to approve the calendar with the only change being the half-days for parent-teacher conference. So moved.
Second?
Heard the motion by Mr. Rosignol for approval of the calendar, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. On the motion, Mrs. Dunn?
Just one question. Is that, is, is the requirement of the, is the present system of parent-teacher conferences required under the language of the contract? Okay, so this would go forward as is? Okay.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rosignol?
If I may, just in, in closing regarding that whole conversation, I think we all brought up, or everybody brought up some decent points. The main thing is, is those points have to be collectively bargained, and that's why the calendar moves forward the way it is. So moved.
On that point, Mr. Mayor.
Briefly, Mr. Hockman?
Briefly, I, I don't agree with that. I still think we maintain control of the calendar for things that aren't expressly stated in the contract, and we can have that conversation maybe another point, time, but I don't, I do not agree with that statement.
Okay, next item. Return of a couple of items that have been discussed in the past, but good items to discuss. The first one is the school start times, and Mr. Hockman, you asked to put this back on the agenda. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I know a committee's been formed, and I've been appointed to it, chaired by Ms. Carpenter, and I know we met a little while ago, and I was just wondering if there was any update on that. That was all.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter.
Thank you. The, the last thing that we, when we met, we were just waiting for some information from the Transportation Department. I have not received that as of yet. I could defer to Dr. Levine.
Yes.
Through the chair. I don't have it in writing for you tonight, but the Transportation Department, in conjunction with our business manager, ran three different scenarios, none of which worked because of buses and differing times. So we're still working on different scenarios to see if we can find one that does. I can't imagine that we can't, because there have been school systems that have changed their times. The question is how dramatically and who changes. We know that we want the elementary schools to go earlier and the high school to go later. What happens to the middle school seems to be central to whether or not we can do this because of the timing of the routes between schools. You can add anything that you want to that, Jared?
I don't think I need to. I think you covered it.
That's pretty much. So we're still working on different scenarios, and so far, we haven't found one to present to the school committee as feasible.
And to that point, when we did meet, we did find that as to be the first biggest challenge, so we're tackling the hardest one first, and the rest of it could somehow work out and fall into place after a little bit of homework, but we are tackling the biggest challenge first.
Thank you. What's up? Thank you. We will continue to monitor that issue. Our next item, voting at the Higgins Middle School. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just hoping that perhaps maybe Ms. Dunn, in her committee liaison between the City Council and the School Committee, could revisit this issue now that the Higgins is completed. I know that there were some objections when I brought this issue up last year, one was continued, we didn't want to have voting in September for the primaries, and we anticipated a large primary because of the presidential election in 2016, and then we didn't want to have two different polling locations in Ward 4 for the, locations in September for the primary and then changing to the Higgins in November for the general election, and that was a valid point. I think Mr. Rosignol made that point. I thought it was a great point. And I know that there were some concerns with regard to safety in terms of private or separate entrances to a polling location, and I think the Higgins accomplishes that whether polling takes place in the gymnasium, there's a separate entrance, or into the cafeteria, which also has a separate entrance and can be cordoned off in either scenario. I do realize that polling in the cafeteria would cause some distraction for a day in terms of food service and where kids would eat if polling were, if polling were to take place during that day. But I would just ask that Ms. Dunn revisit this issue with, in her, in her committee with the City Council, and I'd make a motion to that effect.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Miko, and I'll go to Mrs. Dunn, then I'll go to you, Mr. Miko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the committee to Mr. Hockman, I think that's a great idea, especially after being in the building. That cafeteria really would lend itself to a great spot for voting. Now, on special elections where we may have, you know, obviously, we have students there, maybe we can, you know, move it to the gymnasium, but I think it's just a great way to showcase that building. There are a lot of people in the city who still haven't been in that building, and, you know, that was, that was built with tax dollars, and I think we should utilize that for voting if we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I should let everyone know, I've been speaking with Tim Spanos all along about the issue of voting in the school and specifically about Higgins, and when I saw this item on the agenda, I didn't know what, you know, what was coming on, but I did speak with Tim again, just to check in with him. And he is actually setting up a meeting with Mr. Busey, and the Board of Registars had a meeting a couple of weeks ago because they have issues with a lot of the voting locations, including the Kylie. And so he said that they're, you know, they're talking over various areas. Right now, even though the Calvary is not the optimum location, it's not as, it's not as pressing at the moment, and he was not sure what the registrars would decide to do as far as this year with, with polling places. One of the things that we will be doing, and it is funny because Mr. Miko just said there are a lot of people who haven't had a tour of the Higgins, neither has Mr. Spanos. So, so we're going to take a tour, and we'll be posting it. Anybody in the committee who's, who'd like to come is welcome to come. There were difficulties with each area, and he and I were talking about it. The, the difficulty with the cafeteria, on a day when school is closed, there's no difficulty, but when school is open, that would be a huge, huge issue with the school. Having students, they would, they would end up having to eat in their classrooms, and we don't let people come into the school with food, and, you know, food isn't allowed throughout the building, so we're pretty strict about that. And it was one of those things where he really needs to be able to look at the building just to get a feel for it and try to, try to look at possibilities. But they, they are working on it. It's just, at the moment, not as, not as imminent as, as we feel, but they, they will be getting back to us. So I'll let you know in a couple of weeks of when, when that tour is, and he's been great to work with and to talk with about the whole issue. And, oh, I'm sorry. The other thing is, the City Council does not have a liaison subcommittee at the moment. So, we could. So that even if, even if we did want to meet with the City Council, they don't have a liaison subcommittee.
Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will not be supporting this motion, even, despite them not having a liaison, only because I think at this point, it's up to the Board of Registars. They determine where the polling places are. They have it already established. If they want to change, it's up to their purview, and then they can come before us and give us why they should be changed or why they shouldn't be changed. So, so to me, the motion is kind of useless because it has nothing to do with us nor the City Council at this point. It's up to the Board. They have where we are currently. If they see fit to change, that bothers me. If they see fit to change it, then they would come before us and ask for us to change it, and then it would be up to us if it was a school issue, or they would take it right to the City Council if it was a municipal building. So I think having this in Bev's Subcommittee and having a meeting between the City Council and the School Committee, it would be a lot of spitting parts but going nowhere because it's really up to the Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that one of the things that we had requested the last time we discussed this was an issue of the gym floor, and I'm not sure that we got an answer on how we would protect that if we do use that, that room. And the other point I wanted to make was in regards to showcasing the Higgins and, you know, the taxpayers paid for that building, and some of them haven't seen it yet. I just want to remind everyone of the many events that we hold there, the holiday fairs, the craft fairs, the sporting events, the musicals, all of the fairs that we have. The public is welcome to come to all of those. That building is pretty much open constantly at night and on the weekends, so there are many opportunities for people to visit, and I hope that they'll come to one of those events. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hockman?
Just briefly, to the points, I'll, for you, to Mr. Rosignol, you did make some, I did go through the minutes of our last discussion of this subject, and you made some very specific and articulable arguments that I thought were valid. None of them were related to this is beyond our purview. They all talked about school safety, which I think is important, and I know you do too, and the viability of the location due to the newly or recently, at that time, opening of the school, and I thought that they were valid points. So to suggest that we're not able to revisit it now that those issues are beyond us, I respectfully disagree on those points. And to, through the chair, to Ms. Carpenter, we're going to open up the school to have craft fairs and bake sales and allow the public to enter the building for those purposes. Under our collective bargaining agreement and the, and the calendar that was just approved, there is no school on Election Day. So to say that we can have craft fairs and crafters from out of the city come into a $92 million building and suggest that our own voters and our own electorate aren't able to somehow care for or properly conduct themselves in that building, I find troubling. So all I'm asking for is that the conversation, now that some of the impediments that we, that were raised and I thought were valid last summer are removed, all I'm asking for is that a conversation take place between Ms. Dunn, who chairs a subcommittee that was developed by the chairperson of this committee, Mr. Mayor, and the City Council, whether there's a liaison or perhaps the City Council President if there isn't a liaison, just to continue that conversation. We don't have the authority to tell the City Council, who establishes polling locations, where to put them, but I think we can continue the conversation to tell them or to converse with them that the impediments that were raised last summer, some of them no longer exist.
Okay. Very briefly here, this is a topic we've discussed ad nauseam in the years, in years past. Mrs. Dunn, I'll go to you, Mrs. Carpenter, but I'd ask you to be brief.
Okay. I promise, I'll keep it brief. One of the things that, that I agree, I agree with what Mr. Rosignol was saying is that, in effect, I think we almost have to wait for the registrars to request of us the use of the building, and then at that point, it might be more appropriate for us to meet with the, you know, with the registrars to go over any of the potential issues. I think we could, we could let the City Council know that we are, you know, working with the city clerk, but I don't think it's, I personally don't think it's risen to the level yet where we have to have a discussion with the City Council. They approve, what happens is the registrars determine the location, and then the City Council has to approve the location. So I think we might be getting a little bit of ahead of ourselves if we, if we try, if we try to initiate the, the meeting with the City Council. I almost think we do have to wait for something from the registrars because, as Tim had explained to me, they haven't made a decision at the moment. I think we'll hear very quickly after he sees the building, and hopefully, it'll be next week. So it would be in time for our next meeting if anybody, you know, if, if Mr. Hockman would like to hold off on that motion or wait till the next meeting to find out what the registrars think, because, as I said, they have a bunch of issues with all of their areas.
Yep. I, if I could, I, I do think this is a topic that we should look into. Mr. Hockman, would you amend your motion to possibly have it be that myself, Mrs. Dunn, I can reach out to Council President Sasslaw, and together, we can reach out to Tim, maybe to schedule a meeting in the next couple of weeks to get, gather some information, if you're comfortable with that. If not, you know, I understand.
Mr. Mayor, I think that's, if, if we just add you to Ms. Dunn, I think that's all my motion is, is to have a conversation. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we're going to dictate terms to anybody. I just want, the last we left it was that we were uncomfortable with the use of that building, and I think that there was consensus along with the Board of Registars with that assessment based upon the facts that existed at that time. All I'm asking for is a conversation. I'm happy to amend my motion to reflect the verbiage presented by the chairman.
I, I'd like to gather some information to see how the Board of Registars feels about the Higgins, so I'm comfortable with that. I know it has to be a vote. Mrs. Carpenter, I'll give you last comment, and then we're going to go forward with the vote on the motion that's been made.
Thank you. I just want to point out to Mr. Hockman's comment that to suggest that I do not feel that the public can come in and take care of our building, I've never suggested that. I just put out an invitation to come and enjoy some of our sporting events and craft fairs. Regardless of whether the motion carries or not, it appears to me that these conversations are already taking place. So in my opinion, it's, it's not even an issue at this point because it's already happening, whether the vote passes or not. If they want to use the building, they can make a request based on one member's opinion at this point, who wants to open the building. That's your opinion. At this time, I won't support it.
Ms. Haves, do you have the motion? Good. Okay. Roll call vote.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yeah, either way, it's going to get done, yeah. I'll, I'll prove it. I don't care if I talk to Tim tomorrow. I'm going to be on the phone with him tomorrow. It's no problem, but.
We'll get an update.
We'll get an update, and.
Okay. Public participation. Is anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak? The microphone is available. Thank you. We'll now go to Dr. Levine's superintendent's report. Dr. Levine, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll try to be brief, considering the, the time of night. At some point in the near future, I'll be bringing to you a recommendation for the McCarthy Early Childhood Program and Little Tanner's Preschool Program tuition. I would like to standardize the procedures, and we're working on that now. This, this is an issue where I'm going to ask you to waive all fees. The Salem State Collaborative is a wonderful collaborative that offers tremendous professional development for our teachers. We have a premier membership. Because we have a premier membership, they are willing to come and teach the courses that they teach on-site in our school system at the Higgins. This gives local access to our teachers where they don't have to leave the city. They're much more likely to access this professional development. The, we get back, so, by the way, because we're premier members, they do it, they get it for free. They do not have to pay for these courses. The issue is that they also don't pay for fees. With the agreements that they have, it's a quid pro quo, that they give us all this professional development, we give them the facility. We talked about the energy fee, and I know it's a small number, but they don't even do that. They have no way in their system to pay those fees. So we're kind of at a standstill, and I need to ask you, and Kara can fill in very quickly, the quality and the, the importance we think this is to our teachers. I'm going to ask you to waive all fees as a quid pro quo to Salem State College, Salem State University coming onto our campus and teaching these courses. Some of these courses will actually be taught by some of our teachers, by the way. Kara?
I think you hit the nail on the head. It's, it's a wonderful opportunity for our teachers, and also, it's very exciting that our teachers get to teach our, their own colleagues.
On this issue, Mr. Miko, then Mr. Rosignol.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the committee to Dr. Levine and Ms. Murtagh, I think this is a great opportunity. This is a win-win for our teachers, for Salem State to come in. Again, it just showcases our, our building, our facilities, our, our staff, builds collaboration between staff. They're going to be working together in these, in these PDs, these programs, these classes. I just think it's a win-win. So thank you very much for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Mr. Miko, I'm going to go to Mr. Rosignol and to Mrs. Dunn, but can I ask you just to step in for a moment? To the chair. Mr. Rosignol?
Through the chair to Dr. Levine. I know you're looking to waive the only thing that by policy we can't waive, and that's the $50, but I, I actually think we can waive it in this instance because you're talking about professional development, you're talking about our teaching staff. So I don't look at this as like a building use where somebody's looking to rent the space. This is more of a collaborative of our teachers and an extension of their learning. So I, I almost look at it as not as a building use fee, which would be in front of us, and we would be able to waive anything except for the energy fee, but because of the nature of this, I'm absolutely going to support it because I don't think it necessarily falls in, under that category of a complete building use fee. So I will absolutely be supporting that motion.
Ms. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Miko. And through you to Mr. Rosignol, that's exactly what I was just going to say. This is, this is different, and we have entered into other types of rental agreements in the past with educational groups, and they fall, they've fallen into a different category because of the use of the classrooms. So just classify. So, just classifying it as professional development, I think even helps even more, because to have them come in and offer this to our staff is huge, and I think we have to do that. And to that end, I'd like to make a motion that we follow the recommendation of the superintendent. So move.
Second.
On that motion, Mr. Olympia.
Through the chair, I think it's a fantastic idea, and I'm in full support of it.
Motion on the floor, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody, and I would like to take just a moment to thank Kara for all the work that she does on this collaborative. It really is through her hard work and energy that we have this here, so thank you, Kara. I would ask for a motion to approve the Deca Field Trip to Anaheim to participate in the national competition.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second. And to wish them well.
Roll call.
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would ask you to accept the following donations, first, $400 for the McCarthy School from The Gap.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, $3,500 for snow removal of the turf field at the high school. We had a jamboree at the high school on Saturday, we were not going to be able to have that jamboree unless the turf field was cleared. We have an anonymous donor who paid for that, and we thank him very much.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Roll call.
On the motion, if I may.
Sure.
I also want to thank the lacrosse team, too, because they shoveled each end of it before this contract was established, that's how they got their work out in, so thank you to them as well.
Please.
Mr. Rozignol?
Yes.
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 Thank you, and through the chair, this is so special, again. Last year, Miriam A. Quinlan Tuie, who graduated from PBD High School, as did most of her family, sent us a check for $10,000 once again this year, to establish two $5,000 scholarships, one for male and one for female, in the name of her brother, who was killed in World War II, Philip Douglas Quinlan, PHS class of 1940, and for whom the Seahouse is named. In 2010, Mrs. Tuie also donated an exhibit case containing many artifacts related to her brother's information regarding the Battle of Guadalcanal. In November of 1942, he lost his life aboard the USS Juno. I had the opportunity to meet Mrs. Tuie when she flew up for the first presentation last year, and what a lovely, wonderful human being, and we thank her so much for thinking of us again. I have already sent her a letter, she will be unable to join us this year, but I will make certain that she receives a video of the presentation. So with that, I would ask for approval of this donation.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
Roll call.
And on the motion.
Ms. Dunn.
The material that Mrs. Tuie put into her letter is actually, it's a beautiful essay. I was present the day of the dedication for the case, with all of the artifacts, and she gave an incredible speech that day, and I believe it was reduced to writing. It's very similar to this, but there are even more details, if I can recall. And I'd like to ask if we could, right back to Mrs. Tuie, and just to ask her if she would send us her words from, it was actually the day of the dedication, it was actually her high school reunion, she had come back for that. And if we could put those in an appropriate, bind them, or do something nice, to include them in that case, because what she's written about is a really interesting slice of history, not just US history, but PBD history. And she spoke so eloquently, I wish if we could find a tape of it, I'd like to save the tape. But it's a really important thing to save, in my opinion, and I think it would be nice to be able to keep it at the high school, so that others might be able to look at that.
Through the chair, I will absolutely get in touch with her and ask her that.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you, through the chair. There is nothing urgent to report on the monthly hiring report, except that we are over subscription in ELL at the high school. And the reason I bring that up is because we're continuing to try to solve that problem, but it's been a problem for about a month and a half to two months. And I want to thank publicly the union for their cooperation in trying to help us solve this problem, without reacting overboard. They've been a great partner in our search, and they know that we're doing everything that we can to try to find somebody to rectify this issue. So we have advertised out again on school spring, and we continue to try to, we are over by, I think, how many students?
In three classes, four students, in three.
Spread through three classes, four students. So, again, thank you to the union for their cooperation and helping us as a partner through this issue. And lastly, I want to announce, you do have the revised Pledge of Allegiance schedule in your packet, I want to announce to the public that we have hired Mark Higgins as the new principal of the South School. Mark has accepted and signed his contract. On May 1st, he will meet with the South School during Professional Development Day, he will meet with the teachers, and then we're trying to set up on May 16th, the night of May 16th, a meet and greet with parents, the PTO, et cetera. I have had the privilege of knowing Mark for many years. I was the person who hired him in Salem, when I was the superintendent in Salem, where he has had a distinguished career as an elementary school principal in the largest and one of the most complex schools that Salem has to offer. I believe that the South School community, and he will be a wonderful match, and I'm proud to say that he is now going to be a member of the PBD Public Schools, where he began his career, and left in 2004, and is now coming home. So congratulations to Mark Higgins and his family. With that, Mr. Chair, if I could go now to written communications.
Any objection?
Thank you. In written communications, you have the transportation fees for next year, they are the same as this year, there is no request to increase. All of the routes, the rules and regulations are the same, nothing has changed, and I would ask for a motion to approve, so that we can get out the bus passes, et cetera.
Mr. Rozignol.
That includes one-way bus passes as well.
Yes, it does.
Make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second. On the motion, Mr. Hockman.
Thank you. Through you to Dr. Levine, or maybe Mr. Stanton, can we just get an update on point-of-sale abilities for transportation? It's not on the form, and I'm not sure if we're up to speed on that.
So, you can fill in if I miss anything, just be careful. So, the point-of-sale, the next point-of-sale coming online is at the high school, and that will be up and running, we think, by April vacation. We're going to be training our people up there, and then sometime in May, it should be up and running. Point-of-sales are expensive, and we can only do so much with the money that we hadn't budgeted. So, I don't know that we'll do any other point-of-sales before the end of the school year. However, Mr. Rozignol, and I know that you and the school committee are interested in point-of-sales for not only transportation, but for athletics, and for other types of events that we run, and that all makes sense. It's finding the money, and seeing whether or not we can move forward in the budget for next year. We also need a point-of-sale system, and I did talk with Mike Ingris this morning, about a point-of-sale system for the restaurant and coffee shop at the high school. Right now, the system that we have does not track what we order, doesn't track what we sell. We really don't know for sure what our profit is, we put down a number, but we have no way, really, to back that number up. A point-of-sale system in that area would allow our kids to be more skilled, and allow for better tracking of what comes in and out of those two areas. So, we are looking at point-of-sale for transportation, we are looking for point-of-sale for athletics, and, you know, there is some discussion about whether or not we can build off of the point-of-sale that we put in the cafeteria. Jared seems to think that might be more expensive than actually putting in a new point-of-sale system where we need it. So, I can't tell you for sure that everything is going to happen next year, but we're moving piece by piece. We also have the elementary schools to consider, because we want point-of-sale for the elementary schools as well. Jared, maybe you could fill in regarding cost, et cetera.
Sure, through the chair. It's about $17,000 right now for the high school project. We expect it to be in, for the high school point-of-sale, we expect it to be in during April vacation, and training soon after. Now, the system that we have is mosaic, it does have the capability to have athletics, transportation, student activities, et cetera. That is the goal, to get everyone on that system. I think we have four or five, maybe more, different types of POS systems, we want to get it all consolidated in one. It's an extra license for that, I don't know the exact amount that it is, but that is certainly my goal, to at least address you all next year, see what the cost will be, because not only will it make the parents' lives easier, but it will make City Hall's lives easier as well.
Okay, through the chair. I guess I shouldn't run the meeting.
Hockman?
Thank you, no, if I can just, I certainly do appreciate the efforts that are being put forth for getting the district up to speed on point-of-sale, and I do appreciate also the value in inventory control with a point-of-sale service system, and teaching students along the way how to maintain inventory and things along those lines. But for something like transportation or athletic fees, like Mr. Rozignol raised, where they're larger ticket items, where parents may benefit from the ability to put those, I mean, if a family has two or more students on a bus, it's $600, which is a difficult amount of money to come up with at one time, as opposed to being able to put it on a credit card. So, I appreciate the efforts that are being made. I just wonder if there's even something as simple, in particular, transportation, where inventory really isn't an issue. You have the number of, the application's going to go in to show you the number of riders for the buses, which will be able to determine the number of buses we need and things along those lines, but are we able to just set up, even temporarily, some sort of PayPal or Venmo, to allow for parents to put the charge of the transportation on a credit card, and then pay it as they can, but also be able to provide the district with the number of riders that we'll have in a timely fashion? I know Ms. Bresnahan always talks about the late enrollment of transportation, and I think it's largely in part to parents needing to squirrel away this money and come up with it, where if we allowed, or we're able to offer, and I don't know that we are, and we're going to hear from, I think, Mr. Stanton in a minute, some sort of alternative payment mechanism, it would assist the district and Ms. Bresnahan and her staff in ascertaining how many buses we would need, and set routes and things along those lines.
It's a great idea. At this time, we don't have that. Ms. Bresnahan, right now, is on vacation, as soon as she gets back, I'm going to look into that, and see if it is something that we could potentially do for next year, even if it's just a one-time, a one-time thing for this year, until we get it up on Mosaic.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. My one fear with something like that, because I don't disagree, I want everything on a POS system, because us being in the 1900s is over, it's time to move forward. But my one fear is, and it's currently happening a little bit with athletics, they started their own thing, so now, once we establish a POS system, the staff is going to have to kind of be retrained into a different format. So I just want to make sure, I mean, if it's a one-time deal, and it works, great, but I just don't want them to get entrenched into one system, with, let's say, six months later, we completely flip the script and change the system that we unveil. That makes sense.
Thank you. Jared, Mr. Stanton?
If I may, through the chair, one of the things that Mr. Hockman brought up was Venmo. I think that's a great idea, if we can, for a one-time deal, if we can teach people how to use it, and sort of set up an account like that, because that's sort of a one-time, no cost to the district, we have everything going into one account. I think the treasurer's going to kill me right now for saying that, but I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. I know we have a number of other written communications, letter to...
Mr. Miko?
Huh? We have, oh, there is a motion on the table? I'd like to know the motion, too. Yes.
Approval of the transportation fees? All right, motion was made, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call, vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. And, Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Dunn?
I just have a question, it's a little bit off of the motion, but we provide paid transportation as a convenience to the citizens, and I'm just wondering if we could look to see on grades, this is on, you know, the second page, under the paid transportation, we will allow people to pay for rides over one and a half miles for grade seven and eight, and over two miles for the high school. And I'm just wondering if we could look at the budgetary implications, if we had someone who wanted to ride a bus, and is willing to pay, if they live less than two miles away from the high school, or less than a mile and a half from the high school, if we would be able to allow them, if they're paying, if there's room on a bus, if we would let them, because I'd even love to see it at the Higgins, the traffic in the mornings is quite extensive, and for convenience, if we were able to offer that bus ride to someone who lives within our zone, just to see if that's a possibility.
Through the chair, I think we do that now, and I think it's on a space-available basis. They're the last people considered, so we allow some time to go by as the school year starts, to make sure that we have room on the bus before we offer that up.
Oh, believe me, I understand that, it's just that we have the limits where we will only provide for fee transportation to anyone who lives over one and a half miles to two miles in grade six to the Higgins, and over one and a half miles for grade seven and eight to the Higgins, and I'm just saying, if there were space and they lived a mile away, but someone wanted to pay to take the bus, if we would allow it, because they have to go to a standard bus stop, but they would be paying to get on that bus.
Through the chair, I'll check on that, to see what we do now. Again, I want to say that I think we do that, if there is space available, I think we do offer that, but I will check with you.
Yep.
Just a point of information. I think we do, and it's called the pay-to-ride system. That...
It's called pay-to-ride.
Pay-to-ride, yeah. After October 1, Kara says, we do open it up. It's called pay-to-ride.
Thank you. Other items under written communications, letter to employer, community service placement official, information from the North Shore Consortium Executive Director, letter from Scholastic Sports Marketing LLC, letter from the city clerk, Tim Spanos, regarding city council meeting on SOIs, and the MASCE annual forms. Any questions on any of those items?
Just one comment, very quick, through the chair. The letter to the employer, community service, we developed, we're now in compliance with DESE and state regulations.
Any, Mr. Rosignol?
I believe, through the chair, to the chair, on the SOIs, we never established a pecking order from this committee. I know the city council at the meeting the other night developed theirs, but I know we held off, and I think we need to vote on, and I think tonight's the last night, to vote on our order of sequence that we want for the SOIs. So, I mean, I'd make a motion to actually follow the same course of action that the city council laid out, which was, I believe it was the Kylie first, it was the Welch second, it was the Center third, and the Burke was fourth. So, I'd make that as a motion.
Second.
Second motion made by Mr. Rosignol, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Miko.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, through the chair, to the committee, maybe someone can clarify this. On that, even though we have a pecking order, it would be up to the MSBA, which, so a pecking order really essentially doesn't matter, in a sense, to the MSBA. Is that correct?
My understanding, and it's done on a yearly basis, where they kind of prioritize certain projects they want to move forward on. Yeah, maybe if it's a similar project and we identify one school over the other and they're similar projects, yes, I think it would come into play then. But they really don't give a specific answer on that. You know, I think a very strong argument could be made for a flop of two and three. They're both important. But I don't, I think they're so different, it's going to be up to the MSBA as to what they want to focus on. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To that point, I think two and three, one and four, all worthy projects and all beneficial to the city, and whenever we can partner with the state for reimbursement at that significant level, it's worthwhile. I would be remiss if I didn't advocate for the elevation of the placement of the Center School Statement of Interest. The Center School is, as I think we all know, in a state where it could close literally any day. There are deficiencies that exist within that building that make it unsound, I think, as an elementary school on a lot of different levels, including the gymnasium being the auditorium, being the cafeteria, and, you know, just those things in addition to the condition. I know we spent some money on repair of part of the roof, but there are still issues with regard to leaks and a whole host of other issues. And I'm not suggesting that other buildings in the city don't have those, but this Statement of Interest, I think, has been submitted as long as I've been on the school committee, which is my eighth year, and we haven't had, we've consistently, and I thank the city council, consistently received their support for putting this Statement of Interest before the MSBA. I just think that at some point, we need to decide that it is the priority. The other projects that are submitted in the Statements of Interest are of a smaller nature in terms of repairs to unit ventilators in the Welch School, which is important, and the conversion out of electricity is certainly beneficial in an environmental sense. And I realize that there's also lack or reduced ability to get parts to repair the unit ventilators there, and heat is certainly important. But I think it makes a statement for us as a committee to support the feasibility study, which is what the Statement of Interest for the Center School is, in a way that is more than just a middle of a Statement of Interest and placing it in Priority Three. And we all have different, we all come from different places, and we all have different opinions on this, and I respect that completely. Like I said at the outset of my statement, I'd be remiss if I didn't advocate for the Center School, so just for some consideration, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Okay, so you have a motion made by Mr. Rosignol, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
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 No.
No.
Yes.
Subcommittee reports. Education, Mr. Hockman?
We have a education subcommittee that's going to focus on special education tomorrow evening, six o'clock, at the Higgins.
Thank you. Finance? Mrs. Coppinder?
Thank you. The finance subcommittee met the other morning, and Dr. Levine presented us with the substitute teacher handbook. If he'd like to present that and speak on it, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. I would just be asking you to support a motion to approve the new scale that is in the substitute handbook. We have trouble getting and keeping substitutes. Now, that's not because we're tremendously out of line with what we pay. We pay seventy-five dollars a day, and that's competitive with most communities around here. Some are eighty, but for the most part, we're pretty competitive. We're trying something different, and we're trying to motivate people to stay with us by giving them a bump after ninety days in a school year and another one after a hundred. So, they would start at, I think the scale, I don't have it in front of me, but the scale is seventy-five, eighty-five, and ninety-five. And then retired teachers from PBD would be a hundred. That, the reason that we do that, which other communities do, is to motivate our retired teachers who want to come back and substitute to do it here. They know our community, they know our schools, they know our teachers, and quite frankly, they know our kids. We also know they are of high quality. So, to ask them to come back and stay with us is really a positive for us. So, I'm simply asking for the, the substitute handbook itself is operational. It was a long time coming. We now have this available for all substitutes. It talks about training and what they need to be aware of, the do's and the don'ts, what to say, what not to say, some of the laws they need to be familiar with, et cetera. But I'm not asking you to approve that. What I'm asking you to approve is the financial impact of that, which, by the way, total, if we project about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a year in total cost if this were fully implemented. Thank you.
On this, Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where did you come up with the figure for the twenty-five thousand as an estimate? I was sitting on it, actually. No. Well, because the reason for my question is, is I don't know how you can anticipate retired teachers coming back and factor that into the scale. I could understand the beginning portions being a step, because you can make a determination, okay, we've had this many absentees, we've had this many staff in our district for a long period of time, so I can understand that portion. I just don't know where you came up with the retirees coming back and that factoring into your twenty-five... Through the chair. We take the number that we have now, and we just project it out, so we already have a number of retired teachers who work, who are currently in the system. Sorry, through the chair. Do you anticipate that number going up now that there's going to be a bump in salary? We would hope so. You know, we continue to have an average of ten to twelve, maybe even fifteen, teachers who retire a year. Some of them come back and want to continue to work. Lastly, I think this is fantastic. I think we need to make sure, A, if we have a substitute in the room, that they're the most qualified staff that we can have, so I'm in full support of this.
Thank you, Mr. Rosignol. Mr. Miko?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Through the chair, Dr. Levine and Dr., uh, Doctor, Mr. Rosignol. It's getting late. I'll call you Doctor if you'd like. I totally agree with that as well, and especially with the economy being as, you know, the job force is tight out there, and a lot of people who might be substitute teaching are probably in a part-time job or possibly a full-time job, and I think it's just a great idea to offer that up, especially to our veteran teachers or retired teachers who would come back, and I just think that's a wonderful idea, and I would support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Levine, again, you and I spoke about this, and I was very upfront at the finance committee meeting. I don't disagree with the pay scale and the increase in the pay scale, as you've suggested it, for the purpose of maintaining continuity and encouraging substitute teachers who are willing to come to our district, to continue to come to our district and reap a little financial reward. The money that we're talking about in this proposal is nickels, I mean, in the scope of our budget. I do want to point out two things. One, this, the pay rate for substitute teachers is collectively bargained for and is in the Unit A contract. So, if we're going to make any adjustment to the pay scale, I'd ask that we do it for the balance of this current contract and that it be placed in the collective bargaining when we begin bargaining the next contract. The second point I'd like to make is that we, as a district, collectively bargain with our staff, and when a staff member that's within a collective bargaining unit shifts a position, they receive the full pay scale that's provided and is collectively bargained for. If an outsider or someone not within that bargaining unit takes on that position, there's a differential of ten percent. They receive ten percent less than what the pay scale provides for, and that's to encourage our staff members to stay and move up the ranks and afford them the opportunities to do that, and I'm completely in favor of that. But what we have here before us is a thirty-three percent differential, and while I realize that we're talking about nickels, when we collectively bargain with units, it becomes difficult to provide certain units that are underpaid, and we do have some units that are underpaid, provide them with the ability to increase their pay at a greater rate through cost of living adjustments, because we try to maintain some continuity with the cost of living adjustment through the units. So, I do want to point out that I would be in favor of the scale that's suggested by Dr. Levine with seventy-five percent for the daily rate for the first ninety days of service and eighty-two thousand fifty cents, which is the ten percent differential, for retired staff members. But to increase it by thirty-three percent, which is out of line with what we do in every other bargaining agreement, is an inconsistency that I don't think I can support, even though it's not a dollar of value that is significant. I think for the purpose of precedent and maintaining that level of continuity, it is significant.
Any further comments? We do have a motion on the table, correct? We do not have a motion on the table.
I'm happy to make a motion. I don't know if it's going to get seconded, or if someone else wants to take a stab at it, but...
You need a motion, right? Yeah. I'll go to Mrs. Coppinder.
Thank you. Through the chair, Dr. Levine, based on the information that Mr. Hockman has provided you with, would you like to put it back into Finance Subcommittee, or would you like to move forward?
I'd like to move forward, since we have so little time left to the beginning of the year, to the end of the year. We have a number, we have a history of high substitute needs as we hit April 1st. I would like to be able to assure especially the retired teachers that they're going to stay at that hundred-dollar rate. I do agree that, with Mr. Hockman, that this be a, through the collective bargaining agreement until we start bargaining next year. So, I would simply ask you to approve this from now until the collective bargaining opens in, whenever it is that we open it next year, through the rest of the contract, which is only a year and three months, and it can be revisited. I think Mr. Hockman makes some good points about the range. I do think we're talking about nickels and dimes, and I do think that there's, you know, a ten-dollar bump for somebody who's willing to stay with us for most of the year is insignificant in money, but significant to them and may be significant enough to continue the consistency of the substitute pool that we want to establish.
Mrs. Coppinder?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to follow recommendation of the superintendent regarding the substitute pay rates.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Coppinder, seconded by Mr. Miko. On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Just a quick question, and that recommendation is with the sunset of June 30, 2018.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 No.
All set, Mrs. Coppinder? You're all set? Yep. School safety?
Nothing new to report at this point.
Thank you. Athletics and wellness, Mr. Rosignol?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Quality and standards, anything to report, Mrs. Dunn?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman. And for the record, if I could, I just needed to let you know, I recuse myself from the previous discussion because one of my children is a substitute teacher.
Yes, that'll be noted. Thank you. Liaison, the city council and advisory boards, anything to report, Mrs. Dunn?
Always. We had a parent advisory board meeting last night at the Higgins, and it was a really good meeting. For the things that we spoke about, we talked about snow removal at the schools, we spoke about having the, there's an issue of trash pickup in the neighborhood around the Carroll School at the entrance time, and the parent advisory board came up with a very good suggestion, in my opinion, to request that we submit some information to JRM, just to explain to them why they may want to avoid that area for, you know, the twenty minutes or half an hour at the beginning of the day. The understanding of one of the parents, and, Mr. Mayor, they've contacted your office. Your office has been great, calling JRM and speaking with them, but it happens occasionally now, and our understanding is that the drivers actually determine the route. So, they decide where they're going to start the route on the morning that they normally pick up trash, and we just, the parents were just wondering if perhaps there might be a change in drivers, and they're not aware that school is starting at probably the most congested area in the city. So, if we could work with your office, Mr. Mayor, and possibly get some data and information from the school department to provide it to JRM, the suggestion the parents asked was if we could have, you know, a training for JRM drivers, just to let them know what a school day is like, what the hours were, or, you know, anything that might be helpful so that if a driver is making a decision in the morning, they know where they might want to avoid. And actually, it was an interesting discussion, because parents spoke about how anybody without children in school probably never thinks about avoiding the morning traffic. They may just not be aware of that. So, that was the second topic. We filled the parents in on an update with the superintendent's search, and then we also, they also asked about the redistricting. They had heard on the, when they watched the city council meeting, that redistricting had been brought up by the city council, and we explained that right now, there is nothing, nothing in place, no plans yet to redistrict it. That was part of the Statement of Interest discussion about the overcrowding at the Brown, leading into the need to have the Kylie examined for future use. So, the meeting was, it was good, it was lively. We had a member of the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee attend with us, and that was nice to have that position filled again. So, we'll be meeting next month on the last Monday of April. I believe it's the 27th. And Mr. Olympia and Mr. Miko can fill in anything I forgot. I can't remember the date. It's the last Monday.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Olympia, did you want to add? Through the chair, and also to...
Through the chair, and also to, I'd like to just bring up that last, last Tuesday, we were actually, Pab was actually going to meet with CPAC. And I would think the Special Education Parents Advisory Board that we established, I foresee us in the near future going to CPAC meetings and working with them and brought it in the outreach and then we'll see, you know, where it goes from there. But certainly, I believe their meetings are the third Tuesday of every month. So certainly, we would look forward to potentially meeting with them in April, but I do believe that's school vacation week, so we'll have to, you know, figure out, you know, when they're going to meet next and if not, May will be certainly the month. Thank you.
Thank you both. Building and grounds, nothing at this time. Special Education, Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympio, anything you'd like to report?
Nothing new to report.
Great, thank you. We kind of already did, that was good. Thank you. Before I go to new business, Mr. Miko, you were trying to get my attention.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair, through the committee, I was wondering if I could make a motion to reconsider my vote on the, excuse me, on the SOIs put forward by Mr. Rosignol? Is that something I can do through making a motion or can I go back and?
Haven't done that in a while, so yes, you can make that motion. Motion to reconsider, it would be...
I voted...
It'd have to be seconded first...
Okay.
...by somebody.
Second, I think that the Roberts rules, Mr. Mayor, if I may, say that a person who voted in the affirmative is permitted to bring a motion to reconsider. And I believe Mr. Olympio, Mr. Miko, excuse me, did vote in the affirmative.
Yes, so he would be allowed to make the motion. A yes vote would bring the motion back, a no vote would close it off. So you are, you are allowed to make that motion.
Great, thank you.
It's been a little while on that. So motion's been made by Mr. Miko for reconsideration of the earlier vote, seconded by Mr. Hockman. So a yes vote means we start the discussion over again, a no vote closes it. Oh, it'd be my decision. Oh, great, I get to pick between those two? No, I, I can vote.
Can they read the motion? Because I didn't hear the motion.
It was the motion, it was motion to prioritize, one, Kylie slash Burke slash Brown. Two would be...
To what?
Kylie, Welch, Center and Burke.
All right, motions on the table. This is to reconsider, this isn't to vote. This is to reconsider to open it back up for further discussion. And the yes vote, no vote on this? Yes is to open it back up, no means we, it's been closed.
Yes.
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 Okay, so we need someone to make a motion. Well, Mr. Miko, would you make the motion?
To make the motion to...
Can he, can't? Well, he can make the motion. It's brought it back up, he can make any motion he wants. Yeah, can he? Yeah. You can make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider my vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
You would make a motion to just prioritize the way you would like to.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to prioritize the statement of interest on the, on the building projects. And I'll go with the, the Center School, one, Brown, Kylie, two, Welch, three, and what was the third one? It was the fourth one. It's been a long night. The Burke.
So you want to switch, you want to switch the Kylie, you want to put the Carroll ahead of the Kylie? I'm sorry.
If I can amend that. I'll keep the Brown, Kylie, one, Center, two.
Welch, three.
Welch, three, Burke, four.
Burke, four.
Sorry.
So the, the motion is to reprioritize, to prioritize the SOIs to be submitted. First one would be the Brown slash Kylie. Number two would be the Center. Number three would be the Welch. Number four would be the Burke. Is that correct, Mr. Miko? All right. Switching two and three. Anybody second that motion?
Second.
Second, motion seconded by Mr. Hockman. On the motion, Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Although I agree with your sentiments, I'm going to not agree with this motion. I think the Welch has a better chance of, A, getting passed for one and from the state level, and two, I also know that this is just basically submitting an SOI for a feasibility study. So this isn't a shovel in the ground, it's not a fix, it's not to do really anything to improve the current situation at the Center. Although I agree with your sentiments and I agree that that building is a priority, in my opinion, the Welch windows is something that's attainable, will improve that school immensely and something that won't cost half as much as when we actually need to put a shovel in the ground at the Center. So although I agree with your sentiment and I appreciate this and that's why I voted yes to open the vote back up, I will not be in support of changing the order. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak? Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be honest, setting up a priority list is really a huge dream. If we got all four projects approved by MSBA, I'd ask the mayor to throw a parade. And each, each of the projects is different. If you, if you look at the, the project we've submitted for the Brown slash the Kylie, that's going to involve a feasibility study. With the Center School, that involves a feasibility study. The Welch actually involves not just the windows, but the heating units. And, and I can tell you right now, there are classrooms at the Welch without heat. And it's very difficult down there. If a child is lucky enough to be in a classroom where the window broke, they do have a window they can look out, but most of them go through six years in that building with no sign of sunlight. It's been a longstanding problem and I know windows are not as, they don't sound as, as serious as all of the deficiencies at the Center School, but they do have deficiencies that get picked off. For example, the Center School got new windows about 12 years ago. And that's kind of been how the system has worked, to try to do as much as we can at the schools, taking care of the deficiencies. The list at the Center School are real structural problems from what we, what we understand and it will probably be a much bigger project. Presently, the, the damage ongoing right now with the Kylie actually does push that more into an emergency situation. I mean, it's very visible what's happening up there. The floor is buckling and it's spreading throughout the building. It's just going to keep getting worse and worse. It isn't, there isn't an easy fix up there. And fixing it would allow us to shift programs and help alleviate a lot of problems around the whole district. So each of those projects is special in its own way. Even at the Burke, they need new, new ventilators. But when you look at the overall picture, in my opinion, the reason that we've put that Brown Kylie first is because it is, it is a very, very serious problem at the moment and, and there is severe structural damage going on that could be ongoing. That's why I support the original, the original motion with the original numbers. And again, I think it's just that if the mayor got that amazing phone call, it would be helpful to be able to provide what our priorities are. But truly, the ultimate, the ultimate obiter of this is actually Mr. Healy. He has the best information about what needs to be done and I think hi- his input would be important. I think he gave input at the City Council meeting on, on the priority list. Basically, they took last year's list and then put the Kylie at the front, but that was with those of us who were there present explaining the difficulties. So I won't be supporting it. It's not to slight any school. Just pray that we get all four and then parade.
Mrs. Dunn? Mr. Miko, then Mr. Olympio.
Thank you. Through the chair, and Ms. Dunn, you make some great points. Thank you. And, and one of the reasons why I wanted to make that change is I just don't want to see the Center School drop to number four and then be forgotten. It has been, you know, an SOI for many years and I just, it's in dire need and I just want to bring that attention as much as we can. And you're right, more than likely, it may not happen this time around and the, obviously the Brown Kylie is probably the, the best bang for our buck that we would receive and it would definitely alleviate some of the issues that we have. But I just want to keep the Center School in the, you know, in the news, so to speak, because I think it's so important. It is, it is a building that is just so structurally deficient that we owe it to our children, we owe it to our city, and I just, I just want to keep it there. But you make some great points. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Olympio?
Through the chair, no, I agree with Ms. Dunn. I'll stick with my original position. I mean, honestly, from my understanding, I thought MSBA, they're the ones that really call the shots. So this is kind of like we're picking the C, you know, choose your favorite child. I mean, it's, it's like a no, it's, it's a no-win situation. So don't feel like, you know, one school is more important than the other. I mean, it's just, I'm going to stick with, with the City Council and that's, that's how I feel.
Thank you. I better state what I think because it could come down to my decision. I think the Kylie and the Brown project should be number one because I really think it addresses a problem district-wide and it's a way to alleviate some of the concerns that we have district-wide regarding overcrowding and some redistricting, which I think we have to tackle now. To me, the Burke is the fourth priority because the Burke has gotten some major attention over the years. I, I, you know, picking between the Welch school windows and the Carol, and the Center School is very difficult. I am going to vote for the Center School because I do think that is more of a concern. I don't think that our vote's going to mean anything at the end of the day, but I'm more concerned about the Center School and some of the conditions over there. But I want Welch school windows badly. But I, I do, I'm going to have to vote, so that's kind of how I see it. Mrs. Coppender?
So I just want to put it out there. My original vote for no was because I wasn't in favor of the Kylie being the number one. My, my heart is in, is in the building that the kids are in right now. The most dire need to me is the Center School. But I do feel like this is all for nothing because we've been through it a million times. It didn't matter how many times I voted in what order. It never mattered, it never came down to us anyway. But right now, my first priority isn't the Kylie. So I don't know how this vote's going to end up.
Okay, you have a motion? Roll call.
Could we read the motion?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Make a motion to redo the SOI order in the original fashion. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to go with the, and the earlier vote is discontinued, so it's now to go Kylie slash Burke, one. Two would be the Welch. Three would be the Carroll.
Center.
Center. Four would be the Burke.
Correct.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
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 Yes.
No.
I'd like to make a motion that we prioritize the four projects as one, one, one and one.
Thank you. All in favor? Motion made by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olympio. And we submit them together. I think that, well, I think that's the right way to do it. These are all very valuable projects.
We're going to put them in the order that they give us the money.
Yes.
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 It was, I, and I certainly think there was a little confusion that we've just dealt with, but I think it's because of the passion we feel for these projects. All of us want these things to happen. All of us recognize the need to have these projects. The Center School, we need to come up with a long-range plan that needs attention. The Welch School, you know, I think of, and Mrs. Dunn said it very well, that that project can just pays, would pay great dividends for the whole atmosphere and the environment at that school. It's definitely necessary. The Burke as well is a project that would pay some dividends. And I do think the Kylie project would alleviate so much of the overcrowding and make the redistrict effort, redistricting effort much easier for all of us. So all four are very worthy projects and I think we'd be thrilled to have one, two, three or all four. But, you know, so I think we had a little fun with that, but really, I know it's just because of the passion that each of us feels, you know, maybe we slightly wanted one project over the other. But to me, I think all of us recognize the fact that all four of these projects are very worthy. So we had a little fun with that, but let's see what happens and let's hope for the best. And let's move on. New business. Higgins moving on ceremony. Mr. Hockman, I think you might want to make a couple of quick comments on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, first of all, want to begin this by saying how much I respect Mr. Bucy. I think Mr. Bucy does a terrific job with our middle school. It's a difficult population. It's a huge population in terms of numbers. The staff there is fantastic and terrific. I think it's, the moving on ceremony is kind of filtered up or bubbled up in conversations that I've been in lately. And it's a conversation that I think perhaps maybe Dr. Levine or Mr. Mayor or someone have with Mr. Bucy, just to get his feelings on this and see where things are. I know that the conversations that I'm having with people is that the ceremony is significant and important to people and something that most of the people I'm talking to wish to have continued. I know that there's some difficulties logistically with the new building. The moving on ceremony has historically taken place in the gymnasium, which was an oversized gymnasium at the old Higgins building, and that space is no longer available. I know there's concerns of the flooring in the new gymnasium and it's probably not adequately sized for a moving on ceremony. The hour's getting a little bit late on this graduation or moving on for. The middle school will occur in the third week in April and June unless we have some more snow, which is distinctly possible in New England. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I, I think it is something that needs to be discussed. So if the council, other committee members are comfortable with Superintendent Levine and I talking to Principal Bucy and his staff and coming up with some information to report back, I think that'll be the way to go. And the other item, Mrs. Dunn, under new business request to the City Council regarding snow removal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just give you folks a little bit of background because on the 14th, we had a blizzard and it was a long, long day, the plows were out. And... To be honest, I knew it was 11 o'clock, because that was when everybody was supposed to be in school, and traffic shouldn't be too bad. As I drove down the street, I noticed, one, two, three, I kept going, I ended up counting a dozen, in, in the stretch of Washington Street from basically the intersection of Lynn and Linfield to PBD Square. Private plows that do driveways had come along, and they cleared out residential driveways and business driveways. And what they did, and what they normally do is, when they reach the street, they push the plow, they push the snow, and they push it up on the sidewalk. So the city paid to have the sidewalks plowed so that people could walk safely, and less than a couple of hours later, people came along and not only filled in the area of the sidewalk, they made huge mountains of snow. So anybody who was walking where they were supposed to, in what had originally been a safe area, was now going to climb up a mountain of snow and go down the side. It made me so angry and frustrated that I'd put this on the agenda, because I wanted us to send a letter to the city council requesting some type of an ordinance in action. And during my research, I discovered there is already an ordinance on this, and it's provided in your packet, and I'm going to read it for the record. "But placing of snow on plowed streets, et cetera, is prohibited enforcement by police. No person shall place snow or cause snow to be placed on any sidewalk, street, or highway from which snow has been previously removed by the city or others acting officially on behalf of the city. And the police department shall be the enforcing authority of this section." I'm not going to get into neighborhood issues where people go out, they snowball their sidewalk or shovel their sidewalk, and then the neighbor comes along and pushes snow up on their sidewalk. But that's, that's, there's a different ordinance for that. What I'm talking about is the fact that the city and all the people who work for the city were out all night, all day and all night plowing. They even had the sidewalk plow out there to get everything ready for the schools to open, and people went right back out there and didn't just impede the sidewalk. I'm not talking about a little windfall off the end of a plow, I am talking huge piles. What really offended me were merchants who do that. And I would like to bring it up tonight, and I'm going to make a motion that this be publicized. And Mr. Mayor, next year, hopefully, there's no more snow this year, but next year, when you make the phone call to tell everyone that there's a parking ban in effect, that people are notified that any person who impedes the previously sidewalk-plowed areas on the student walking routes can be penalized. I spoke, I called the police department just to find out what happens, and they said that they, they do enforce this, they will enforce this, the enforcement will be on the homeowner or the business owner. Whoever owns the property is the person who's contracted with the person who's plowing out their driveway, and that there are penalties. It can, it can either be $25, $50 to $100, to $100, $200, and $300. And they explained to me they do get phone calls from people talking about this. Many more of their phone calls are about private, I'll, I'll say the side streets, people who are off of, off of the city sidewalk plow. But, Mr. Mayor, your staff did a really good job, they really did, and seeing what happened afterwards just really made me angry at the inconsideration of people coming and truly impeding pedestrian traffic and impacting the safety of our students. So I don't know if you need a motion, you know, I'll call you next year to say, put this in the phone call, but I think it needs to be publicized, I think people need to be aware of it, and I think they should be ashamed of themselves for doing it, because it was a rotten trick.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. I love when the passionate Beverly Ann Griffin Dunn is, is ready to go. Thank you, I think you said it well. Any other items, Mr. Rozignol?
Yes. I'll be brief. I, I know we got a late communication regarding the current FY '17 budget as of 3/27/17. I have a couple of questions on it. We can either go through it now, or we can wait until the next meeting, they're not pressing. The, my, the only one I do want to ask right now is the transportation, where that is at, is that a negative balance?
Through the chair. Right now, it's showing a negative 21, 20, 21,000. Basically, what that is showing right now is, you see that we have an encumbrance there? So that encumbrance is technically not spent. So we still have the offset of the 335,000 coming from that revolving account that if we ended today, would end in a positive.
Now, does that transfer, I'm sorry, through the chair, does that transportation budget also include athletic busing as part of that, or that's just transportation and busing is under athletics?
Uh, that includes, athletic transportation is included in that.
In the transportation line?
Yep. And just for, for the record, so that budget for athletic transportation is 64,000. We still have about 12,5 balance in that account.
Without spring sports having even started?
Uh, correct, with a $15,000 encumbrance. So about 27,000.
If we could just have this on the next meeting, I just have a couple other questions, but that's a little...
No, I think that's a good idea, we'll put that on for the next agenda for discussion.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Motion to adjourn, all in favor? Yes.